It being six o'clock, I'd like to call this meeting the Carver Board of Select, a Select Board meeting of May 4th, 2021, to order. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
To flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would someone like to say the community prayer?
I'll take over.
Thank you.
Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for the citizens of our community, that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. And keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Amen.
It's now time for citizens' participation. Is there anyone here who would like this moment to say a few words? Seeing no one, thank you. The chief has asked that we take a couple of things out of order, so I will, I will ask for a motion.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we take the police department's swearing-in ceremony out of order and take it first.
I'll second that.
Thank you. It's been motion made in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Chief, would you like to say a few words?
Yes.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Does that work?
I don't know. Yes, it does.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for joining us tonight as the Carver Police Department takes another step forward. Tonight's swearing-in ceremony will acknowledge the achievements of four very deserving individuals. It is also a memorable moment for the entire department and the community, as a great deal of effort and cooperation has provided new opportunities for these officers today and for others in the future. Working together with our police union, our officers, the town administrator, and with the support of the Select Board, we have moved forward with several key points from the strategic plan we developed back in 2018. One of those points was the construction of the new facility, which, with the support of our residents, we just moved into. The creation of a true second-in-command point has been fulfilled with the deputy chief's position. The development of new policy and procedures is moving forward with the department pursuing accreditation, which will be overseen by the admin accreditation sergeant. The addition of two other sergeant positions will allow us to fill a detective sergeant and a split-shift sergeant, both of which will allow for better supervision and guidance for our officers. I am very grateful for, and cannot stress enough, the incredible level of cooperation, dedication, and professionalism that our police union, our town administrator, and our Select Board have shown to work together and accomplish these important goals. These accomplishments will continue to help our police department grow and provide better police service to the residents and visitors of our town. I would really like to thank the members of the Select Board, the town administrator, our police officers, and the public for their continuing support for our department and our efforts to improve. Now, if we could move forward to the ceremony of swearing-in our new deputy chief and three new sergeants. Mr. Dale, if you could come up? The person I've chosen for the role of deputy chief of police is someone who's been performing those duties under a different title for seven and a half years. Sherri Samento has been a police officer for 26 years. She began her career within the Better Police Department in 1995. There she worked as a patrol officer, a juvenile detective, and she came to the Carver Police Department in 2002. And during that time, she has worked as a patrol officer, a sergeant, the administrative sergeant was the second-in-command of the department, and for a time was the only sexual assault investigator within the department. She has a master's degree in criminal justice. In her role as a second-in-command, she has assisted with the day-to-day operations of the department, conducted internal affairs investigations, supervised the newly-created detectives unit, and been responsible for the department any time I've been away. I am proud to be here tonight to witness her being sworn in as the first deputy chief of police of the Carver Police Department. Sherri, would you stand up? Come up. Do you want to use this mic?
Yes. Aye. Aye. Sherri Samento.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All of the duties incumbent upon me.
All of the duties incumbent upon me.
As deputy police chief.
As deputy police chief.
To the best of my ability and understanding.
To the best of my ability and understanding.
I will bear true faith.
I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to.
And allegiance to.
And will uphold and defend.
And will uphold and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the Commonwealth.
Constitution of the.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the bylaws of the town of Carver.
And the bylaws of the town of Carver.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Continue to repeat. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Sherri Samento.
Hereby accept.
Hereby accept.
The position of.
The position of.
Deputy police chief.
Deputy police chief.
In the police department of the town of Carver.
In the police department of the town of Carver.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Tonight, Deputy Chief Samento is being pinned by her brother Bruce Samento. Mr. Samento?
Congratulations.
Also, tonight, Deputy Chief Samento is being pinned by her brother Bruce Samento. Mr. Samento? Also, tonight, Deputy Chief Samento is being pinned by his wife Elizabeth. If you'd come forward. Sergeant Gillen is being pinned by his wife Stephanie. If you could come forward. And Sergeant Kelly is being pinned by his wife Abrina. And Brandon. Congratulations, sergeants. Thank you to all the family members who came out tonight to be part of this. Thank you for all the officers from our department to share in this ceremony tonight. We greatly appreciate it. I'm very fortunate to have the opportunity to bring some very talented people up into roles that I'm sure they will be very successful in, and that they will be mentors to some of the officers below them as they come up and fill these roles in the future. So thank you again. Thanks for your time. Thanks to the Select Board for letting us be here. I don't know if you guys have time, but if you want to come down, maybe we can get a picture with all the new sergeants on the Select Board. Is that something we could do?
We could do that.
Thank you. All right, everybody come back up. Can you get a good picture? Thank you. Thank you, guys, very much. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you very much. So that concludes our presentation tonight. Thank you very much for your time again. All the officers, if you want to head back to the station, we can have some pictures and refreshments there. Thank you.
I know, I am too. I'm blinded.
Oh, okay.
Blinded by the light.
Wait, they don't want to stay for the rest of the evening?
How do you clear an auditorium quickly?
I know.
We're going to start a Selectman's meeting.
I was going to say they have cake, that's why.
Sarah, if there's no one else here to, like, you know, do things with us, can we rearrange so we can see each other?
I know.
I'm fine with that if we can figure out how to do it.
I mean, I'll bring my chair down there. I'd just rather not try to have to talk to Jim, like, way over here.
I know, I know, yeah. Yeah. We'll see what happens. Yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
We can do that.
Okay.
Okay. It's now time for the reorganization of the board. Mr. LaFond.
Thank you, Sarah. As usual, until such time that the board reorganizes, the town administrator will run this proceeding. As it stands, Sarah's the chair, Bob Belbin is the vice chair. I will open up any nominations for the position of chair.
I'd like to nominate Mark Townsend for chair.
I'll second.
I'd like to nominate Sarah Hewens for chair.
I'll second that, if no one else will.
Can I ask a question?
Well, first, any other nominations for chair before we... Hearing none. Yes, Jen?
Okay. Guys, can we just do the desks? This is weird. Can we re... I don't want to talk to you guys, like, way down there. Do you mind?
All right, could we recess for five minutes?
You can alternate around.
That's quite all right.
Was elected chair by her board over 30 years ago. And prior to her, the previous woman to be chair was elected over 40 years ago. And prior to her, there were none. This is not my reason for wanting to be chair, but I think that, as I said, I think I've earned it with my experience and my years of service.
Thank you. Any other discussion on that motion? On the first motion? Jen?
Can I ask a question?
Please.
That will end up going to both of them?
You certainly may, yes.
Okay. All right, you guys know me and my research, so I looked up a lot of stuff, and I came across some kind of cool stuff when it came to the position of chair. And in my research, two towns kind of popped out at me, and I thought it was interesting that the chair, their tradition, it's not mandated by their bylaws, but their tradition in Arlington was that their chair and vice chair are the two members that are next up for reelection, which I found interesting. And the senior member would get the chair position unless he or she's been already chair, then the junior member would. And they make it a point that each member gets to be chair at least once every six years. So I thought that was kind of interesting. I like the sharing of the chair, but the, the part about the two members next up for reelection, I was like, hmm. But then in Harvard, I had seen that they allow their chair to be chair for up to two consecutive terms, which I also found interesting. So I would like us to kind of explore that in the future, because I think there are interesting policies and things that I'm definitely taking into consideration while thinking about this. But I guess my question to you guys is that I think one of the, if not the most important thing that us as a board is going to do in the next year is to hire a full-time town administrator. So I would ask either of you, what do you think you'd bring to the role as chair that would bring us the strongest pool of candidates that we can get to choose from?
Would you like to go first, Mark?
Sure, I don't care. I would say what I bring to that is the same thing I bring to this board, and the same thing I've said for a while. I come to every item on the agenda without an agenda. I look at everything in a fair and unbalanced way and make decisions based on what I think is best for the town. And I think that's all, that's what I would bring to that decision, that's what I try to bring to every decision. So that's all I really have to say.
Is there anything specific you do for this?
Specifically, I think when we come to the point where we start appointing a screening committee, I look at everyone and everyone that would apply in an unbalanced and fair way. And I think the best way for us to proceed, looking for a permanent town administrator, is to appoint a screening committee who will look at everything and all the candidates in a fair and unbalanced way. So I think that's, that's what I bring.
So, thank you for your question, Jen. I think one of the things that I bring is a knowledge, I know that Mark was elected three years ago in our previous, under our previous town administrator, but I bring a knowledge that's more than just knowing the current town administrator and the previous town administrator. But I also bring the knowledge of knowing this town administrator, even if he's not the selection of the select, selection committee, he was kind of a different person then. So it's almost as if I've known three different town administrators. I think that's a very important piece of knowledge to have going into this kind of process, because you see, this is a very important person, and they contribute so much, and they contribute to the tone of the town, the morale of the people who work in the town. And so regardless of who comes to us as applicants, I think it's just important to have seen a lot of that previously and have that sort of personal knowledge of what can happen, what should happen, what doesn't happen. I also think that it's important to understand how the town works, and I think I bring that to the table as well, because sometimes you can see applicants who, who look really good on paper, but may not know how towns really work. And I know that takes experience, and people have to start somewhere. But I think it's important to have, like I said earlier, have that institutional knowledge so that you can tell whether someone is really cut out for it, no matter how young they are. And then I think that I've also been very fair and inclusive. I think I've really worked hard to make sure everyone on this board contributes. Some have possibly contributed more than others, but I've certainly tried to make that a fair process, and I think that's important, because we're all elected and we all should have our say. So I think, I think those are my reasons for, for consideration.
Are there any other comments on the first motion? And obviously, the first motion speaks to the second motion, too, so Bob?
Actually, yeah. Since we're asking questions here, I have to say, one of the things that I did is, when last year we came to a vote, my decision was swayed from Mark to Sarah because of a decision that Mark had made. And we discussed this afterwards, and actually before and after. But that swayed my motion to have Sarah. And as the vice chair, I did, when she started, give her some tips and some pointers of what and other things to do and not to. But as she got into the position, okay, I actually asked a question of her about putting on the agenda a number of different things, but the one thing that really struck me as changing my opinion right now was what Jen had brought up to me about the chair. And I wanted that discussion about the chair and what the chair's roles and responsibilities are. And the response by Sarah, I did not care for. So that's why I am not siding with her, and my support will be to Mark.
Any other comments? Hearing none. Moving forward then on the motion to elect Mark Townsend as chair, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
That motion carries three to two.
Oh, no. This isn't Boys Against Girls, right?
No. No.
Jen, that's a pretty bad comment to make. I'm sorry. I take offense to that.
Oh, I'm, okay. I apologize. It was an off-the-pup remark. I'm sorry.
I don't take offense to it at all. It's fine.
That being said, for the remainder of the reorganization, I turn it to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. LaFond. And before I go any further, I'd just like to, first of all, thank Ms. Hewens for her leadership on the board for the past year.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend.
And I'd also like to thank the board for the confidence they've shown in me in this vote tonight. With that being said, I'd call for a motion for the election of vice chair. Is there a nomination?
I think I'd like to nominate Jim Hoffman vice chair, if he'd accept the nomination.
I'll second. Are you accepting?
I'll pass. Thank you. I'd like to nominate Sarah Hewens for vice chair.
I'll second.
We have a nomination for Sarah Hewens for vice chair. And a second, are there any other nominations? Hearing none. All in favor of Sarah Hewens for vice chair?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Four to one. All right. Moving forward, the next item on our agenda is the Plymouth County Commissioners. Forgive me, I'm a little blinded with the lights in my eyes here. We do have the Plymouth County Commissioners here. I see Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Valenzola, and Ms. Wright, welcome. Mr. LaFond, do we have a place that the county commissioners can speak into a microphone this evening, or?
There's a podium right down front.
Oh, okay. All right. So who is, who is going to speak for the, for the county commissioners? Okay. That's fine. Please. Yeah, just that way the people at home can, can hear what you have to say.
Can we turn the podium around so you can...
Sure. Yeah, you can turn it around.
That way you can face people well. How do we... I don't want my back to you.
Yeah.
It's fine. Or to the audience. How do you want us to do this? All right. There we go. Compromised.
This is why we're county officials.
Well, I apologize, apologize to the audience. May we take our masks off from here? Is that okay?
I'm comfortable with it.
Thank you. So, good evening. I'm Plymouth County Treasurer Tom O'Brien. I have to tell you, it's exciting for me to be back here, because some of you who have been around for a while will remember that I used to be the state representative for one precinct here in the town of Carver. And I attended many graduation ceremonies here, many ban ceremonies here, and it was great to come back and to be here again in the town of Carver. I really appreciate that opportunity. I thoroughly enjoyed my years representing the town up at Beacon Hill, and it's great to be back. As was mentioned, I bring with me our two commissioners, Commissioner Valenzola, Commissioner Wright. Chair Hanley couldn't make it this evening, and he apologizes, you know how much we enjoy being here. I'm going to kick it off with a bit of good news, and then we'll do a little bit of summary, and then answer any questions you have and a few other things, if that's okay with everyone here. Is that okay, Mr. Chair?
Fine.
So the bit of good news we have is we come bearing another check. Because as we were here last time, I think it was only a few weeks ago, we were out in the gazebo and presenting you with the third check, my commissioners said, "Treasurer, we just, we got to keep moving along," and the commissioners voted at their last meeting for a number of submissions. They made sure I worked weekends, evenings, I'm allowed to go home, I think at 1:00 a.m., as long as I'm back in the office at 5:00 a.m. to get this done. But we have a check for you today in the amount of $182,079.88. And in fact, what I'm going to do, if it's okay, is ask Commissioner Wright to go up and present that check to the chair. Now normally, there'd be a big round of applause for this. I actually am surprised the audience didn't appreciate it. When we bring $19,000 to town of Plimpton, they roll out the red carpet. So I was thinking $182,000 would be well-received. Thank you very much, Catherine. And then I'm going to ask...
Since we're asking questions here, I have to say, one of the things that I did is when last year we came to a vote, my decision was swayed from Mark to Sarah because of a decision that Mark had made. And we discussed this afterwards and actually before and after. But that swayed my motion to have Sarah. And as the vice chair, I did, when she started, give her some tips and some pointers of whatnot of things to do and not to. But as she got into the position, okay, I actually asked a question of her about putting on the agenda, a number of different things. But the one thing that really struck me as changing my opinion right now was what Jen had brought up to me about the chair. And I wanted that discussion about the chair and what the chair's roles and responsibilities are. And the response by Sarah, I did not care for. So that's why I am not siding with her and my support will be to Mark.
Any other comments? Hearing none. Moving forward then on the motion to elect Mark Townsend as chair. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed?
No.
No.
That motion carries three to two.
Oh, no. This isn't Boys Against Girls, right?
No, no.
Jen, that's a pretty bad comment to make. I'm sorry. I take offense to that.
Oh, I'm, okay. I apologize. It was an off-the-pup remark. I'm sorry.
I don't take offense to it at all. It's fine.
That being said, for the remainder of the reorganization, I turn it to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. LaFond. And before I go any further, I'd just like to, first of all, thank Ms. Hewens for her leadership on the board for the past year.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend.
And I'd also like to thank the board for the confidence they've shown to me in this vote tonight. With that being said, I'd call for a motion for the election of vice chair. Is there a nomination?
I think I'd like to nominate Jim Hoffman, vice chair, if he'd accept the nomination.
Who's? Mr. President? Are you accepting?
I'll pass. Thank you. I'd like to nominate Sarah Hewens for vice chair.
I'll second.
We have a nomination for Sarah Hewens for vice chair. And a second, are there any other nominations? Hearing none. All in favor of Sarah Hewens for vice chair?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Four to one. All right. Moving forward, the next item on our agenda is the Plymouth County Commissioners. Forgive me, I'm a little blinded with the lights in my eyes here. We do have the Plymouth County Commissioners here. I see Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Valenzola, and Ms. Wright, welcome. Mr. LaFond, do we have a place that the county commissioners can speak into a microphone this evening or?
There's a podium right down front.
Oh, okay. All right. So who is, who is going to speak for the, for the county commissioners?
I think you all are.
Okay. That's fine. Please. Yeah, just that way the people at home can, can hear what you have to say.
Can we turn the podium around so you can?
Sure.
Yeah, you can turn it around.
That way you can face you, well, how do we? I don't want my back to you.
No.
It's fine. Or to the audience. How do you want us to do this? All right. There we go. This is why we're county officials. Well, I apologize, apologize to the audience. May we take our masks off from here? Is that okay?
I'm comfortable with it.
Thank you. So, good evening, Plymouth County Treasurer, Tom O'Brien. I have to tell you, it's exciting for me to be back here because some of you who have been around for a while will remember that I used to be the state representative for one precinct here in the town of Carver. And I attended many graduation ceremonies here, many ban ceremonies here, and it was great to come back and to be here again in the town of Carver. I really appreciate that opportunity. I thoroughly enjoyed my years representing the town up at Beacon Hill and it's great to be back. As was mentioned, I bring with me our two commissioners, Commissioner Valenzola, Commissioner Wright. Chair Hanley couldn't make it this evening and he apologizes. You know how much we enjoy being here. I'm going to kick it off with a bit of good news and then we'll do a little bit of summary and then answer any questions you have and a few other things, if that's okay with everyone here. Is that okay, Mr. Chair?
Fine.
The bit of good news we have is we come bearing another check. Because as we were here last time, I think it was only a few weeks ago, we were out in the gazebo and presenting you with the third check. My commissioners said, Treasurer, we just, we got to keep moving along and the commissioners voted at their last meeting for a number of submissions. They made sure I worked weekends, evenings. I'm allowed to go home, I think at 1:00 a.m., as long as I'm back in the office at 5:00 a.m. to get this done. But we have a check for you today in the amount of $182,079.88. And in fact, what I'm going to do, if it's okay, is ask Commissioner Wright to go up and present that check to the chair. Now normally, there'd be a big round of applause for this. I actually am surprised the audience didn't. When, when we bring $19,000 to town of Plimpton, they roll out the red carpet. So I was thinking $182,000 would be well received. Thank you very much, Catherine. And then I'm going to ask Commissioner Valenzola to give the all-important paperwork over to Rick LaFond, the town administrator, which he knows he needs to keep and, and care for. No picture probably necessary.
I will, I will defer this to Elaine Weston to make sure. Guess where it's supposed to be? Thank you.
So I'm pleased to report with that presentation and that delivery of that check, Carver has now received $439,769.20 from the Plymouth County CARES program. And as the commissioners and I-
Mr. O'Brien, could you just repeat, repeat that number quickly?
I apologize to you, Chair, and to the board.
Thank you.
And as the commissioners and I go around the county and meet with the 27 communities, we get and hear the same thing that we've heard here in Carver, which is appreciative of the commissioners stepping up to the plate and taking the resources as they became available through the federal act that was passed back in March of 2020. Our communities here in Plymouth County have benefited two to three times as much as any community outside of Plymouth County because we took the money and didn't let it go to the state to have them administer it. So not only are we bringing back more money, and I know that Commissioner Wright and Commissioner Valenzola will probably want to add a few things, we're administering it for a cheaper cost and really delivering back to our communities. So it's always great to be here and deliver back to the town. I should also report that the town still has some submissions pending, which are under review. We have a very thorough review process. We have a CPA team that reviews every submission. It then comes to my comptroller, who reviews every submission, and then comes to my desk to review every submission before it gets to the commissioners for their final review and approval. So while the process is very thorough, the benefit of that is that when we present a check, you have no worries. You know that all the audit work is done and everything is, as they would say, clean and perfect from an audit standpoint. Mark that against other communities in New England who have received money and had to give it back because the reasons they submitted for were deemed ineligible under the CARES Act. Or other communities that have submitted and expected monies to come that didn't come because the items were ineligible or not permissible under the CARES Act. So the advantage of the program we've set up is that work is done ahead of time. And you know when we're delivering you a reimbursement check, it's something that's eligible and responsive to the CARES Act and that money is now the town of Carver's to spend as you need. Let's not forget, it's been a little more than a year since we've been in this pandemic. And we are constantly reminded of the challenges you folks face on the front line. And we're very fortunate to have partners up in Congress who passed this act, our state Senator Mark Pacico, our state representative Susan Williams Gifford, who have been supportive of the Plymouth County CARES program. And then of course, the folks you have here at your team, in the administrator's office, the treasurer's office, and on the board to make this program work. I have a few other things I'd like to talk about and I'll try and keep it brief. But if it's all right, I'd like to turn it over to Commissioner Wright to add a few thoughts and then Commissioner Valenzola and answer any questions. Is that okay?
Fine, thank you.
Yes. Commissioner Wright?
Good evening and thank you for having us here this evening. It's always a pleasure to come out. And as I said at the last presentation, I like to say that if you know we're here, the commissioners and the treasurer, you know you're getting money. It's always a good thing. I do want to thank the staff for all their hard work, the board of selectmen, the town administrator, and also our legislative delegation who has really been by us, stood by us through this past year, which has really been difficult, but they've supported us in every way, as you have. We thank you very much and we want to come back again. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. The best part about going last is everything's been said. But I'll just add to you, Mr. Chairman, to the board, again, I echo Commissioner Wright's sentiments, the town of Carver, the leadership team, and the work that you folks have put in to make this program successful on behalf of your constituents has certainly made our role here significantly easier, as Treasurer O'Brien elaborated on the process. I think what's important to highlight with that process, and he was a little modest, Plymouth County CARES, the commissioners and the treasurer's office have administered this program at a cost of 1%. Let alone in government, there are a lot of things in business and in life I would like to do at a 1% cost. But we have done that. And the reason we've done that and the reason we have worked extremely hard to do that is to ensure that as much money as humanly possible finds its way back to Carver and to the other 26 communities in Plymouth County. To the other point the Treasurer O'Brien made as it relates to the comparisons between Plymouth County communities and communities outside, I recently found, and I can share this link, the dispersments the Commonwealth has made to communities across the state, and they pale in comparison to what towns like Carver and the rest of Plymouth County has received. When you run a simple population count and other metrics, Carver and the rest of Plymouth County have benefited upwards of 3% to 5% more in funds, not only available to them, but already distributed than with the state. And again, the hard work of the treasurer's office and the commissioner's office in conjunction with our state and federal partners as well as local, I think, has offered a glimmer of good hope and optimism in what's been a pretty dour and unfortunate year. So we're always happy to be here in Carver to echo Commissioner Wright. It's a, it's a wonderful town and it's always great to be before selectmen. We know how hard you work on behalf of your constituents here in town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Valenzola. And I'll just conclude on the CARES part. That's all right. Yeah, the CARES part, to mention, the program's not over. It runs through December 31st of this year. So there's still work that we all need to continue to do. I get regular calls from the administrator and the treasurer to make sure that we're doing everything and that Carver is maximizing its resources. So we'll continue to do that. We hope to have more checks out in the near term. I know there are other submissions that will be coming along and we'll certainly be looking forward to those and processing those. We also welcome the chance to come in. Any point in time you folks would like to see us, we do enjoy coming out to our towns. We don't often get to come to an actual live selectmen's meeting, so this is a bit of a treat for us and we welcome that opportunity. The last thing, Mr. Chair, and a point of personal privilege, if I might, I just wanted to thank the town of Carver for joining the Plymouth County OPEB Trust. You were the first community to join the Plymouth County OPEB Trust and you have benefited greatly from that participation in the trust. I was hoping I might be able to hand out a sheet of the trust performance to you folks. And we'll split it up, Jared can take it to my right and Sandy can take it to my left so that you can see how well you guys have done participating in this program. And again, you were the first. I can tell you there are now 29 member units.
Thank you.
And you'll see from the sheet being handed out to you that we have $32 million in assets under management.
Thank you.
I really wanted to highlight this particularly because you'll see the portfolio. And you want to look at total portfolio net of fees. Our benchmark is the goal we strive for. It's a very aggressive goal. We're not going to be that aggressive, but we, we oftentimes come very close. You'll see year-to-date, so the three months ending March 31st. We don't have the April numbers yet because it's too early in May. We returned 2.33% net of fees. That's for the first three months. That's excellent. But look at your one-year return. Your one-year return net of fees is 43.24%. So in the year, yes, that number is correct. We returned, in your portfolio, 43.24% net of fees, after all fees. That's pretty remarkable. Let's look at the three-year number, 9.93. Now that's annualized. What that means is if you average it out, you've returned that much each year. I bet you all of us wish, wish our investment portfolios had performed that well. Because remember, we've had a pretty rocky market. Let's look at the five-year. You guys have been in for exactly five years. We have returned 11.95% after fees annualized. So that means each year you're averaging 11%, almost 12% after all fees in this program. It has been a huge benefit to the town of Carver. You now have, as of March 31st, $2,127,976.55 in the Plymouth County OPEB Trust with lifetime earnings through that date of more than $600,000. So in five years, you've taken an investment of a little more than a million and earned $600,000 on that by participating in this program. Our members are thrilled. One of your former board members served on our finance committee, so deserves some credit for this. Ron Clark was on our finance committee for a number of years. And so we just value your participation. We ask you to continue to spread the word. Ron was great, as all of you have been, in letting other towns know. We don't have a big advertising company. We don't have an office. We do this as a service. Again, as Commissioner Valenzola mentioned, we're here in government. We try to keep costs down because that means more money for you. So I just thought that'd be an interesting highlight for you folks to see the benefit of your investment in the Plymouth County OPEB Trust. So, Mr. Chairman, I think that concludes our presentation. If you have other questions, we're here to answer them.
Well, I, I appreciate that and those are some, some tremendous returns. Yeah, thank you. So I, I really appreciate you folks coming out tonight because I think myself, I think the rest of the board, the whole Plymouth County CARES program has been such an important, you know, part of helping towns make it through the whole COVID pandemic. And I know Carver has made submissions. We have some money left with you folks. And I just thought it was very important for the board, the town administrator, our finance director, Meg Lemay, who unfortunately is going to be moving on. And we're going to be bringing in new finance director who may not have experience with Plymouth County CARES. I thought it was important that we all sort of just get on the same page and, and see how much we've received, how much we have left in the pipeline, what submissions are out there. And, and just if any of the other members of the board, I mean, I've been fortunate enough to go back and forth with, with you folks a few times. You've always been quick to answer my questions. But some members of the board may have some questions. So, Mr. LaFond?
Yes, well, on that subject, just to date, the town has submitted approximately $1.3 million in requests after this evening. There's approximately $800,000 in submissions that are still pending and under review by the county. Now, if all goes well and most of that is approved, we would have a balance of about $400,000 remaining, maybe a little bit more. But as of right now, as I say, we've got some outstanding, and Tom and I have discussed it. And I certainly know that from my peers and I have tremendous respect and sympathy for Tom and his office staff. As successful as this has been, I suspect that he would be very pleased when this process is over. I think he probably works about 85 hours a day to try to get this done. Too bad they don't let you have some more staff support down there, Mr. O'Brien.
Well, they're, they're working on it. We appreciate that very much. The commissioners are supportive. They recognize that. I, I brought on a special assistant to help with the process and our CPA team has brought on some people. But we're also very cognizant of keeping the costs down. One of our frustrations was that others that administer this, not just the state of Massachusetts, but around the country, they're, they're administering it at the cost of 5% to 7% to 8% to 10%. So that means they're putting that money into their operations. We realize, and Commissioner Valenzola and Commissioner Wright have said this so well, every dollar we don't spend means more money into your pockets. In your pockets, I mean the towns' pockets. And so we really strive to, to keep those costs down. I think you're right. I will be happy when the program is over, but I'll be happier when the towns get all the money that we know they desperately need. And those figures certainly match the figures you and I had a chance to chat earlier today. The town has some submissions in, but you, you do have some more resources and I know you'll be submitting for that as the costs come. It does run through December. So we did have some communities that got to their cap fairly early in the process and found they might have needed other resources. We have some that are a little slower. You guys are kind of right in the middle of the, of the pack in terms of that process, but we'll keep processing them as quickly as we can. And, you know, the commissioners, you can tell, really love to come to Carver. So every chance we get, we'll come and bring another check.
And I would also like to thank Meg Lemay. You mentioned her, Mr. Chair, but she really, her and her staff have to put together some excruciating detail for these submissions to, to go forward. So, so thanks, Meg. And did I mention to you that you're not going anywhere if we can do anything about it? No? Okay. I'm trying, Mr. Chair, I'm trying.
If I could echo that, another opportunity, Mr. Chair, Meg has been fantastic. She's, never hesitates to reach out. She is a pleasure to work with. I have some people that tend to get a little stressed as they're dealing with whatever challenges they have in their communities. Meg is the consummate professional. It has been a pleasure working with her. I, I'm sorry to hear that, that may change in the near future, but wanted to echo those sentiments and, and offer on behalf of the county, a thank you to Meg for her work.
Well, thank you. And other questions from the board for the commissioners?
Just thank you very much. I appreciate all your help and work, getting us some more funds coming back. I appreciate it.
We very much value our partnership with the town of Carver. As you can tell, we're, we're thrilled that you're part of Pecot. Again, I know Meg was, was one of the folks that advocated for that, so deserves the credit for the returns that we've been, we've been having. And we'll continue to do the best we can for Carver and always look forward to the opportunity to come back.
Thank you. Mr. O'Brien, if I could just ask you a couple of questions. So you, you mentioned this program ending, but then there's another, forgive me if I get my acronyms wrong here, ARPA?
That's exactly correct, Mr. Chair.
So, so do we, will the ARPA program be administered by Plymouth County as well?
That is a great question. And candidly, we just don't know the answer quite yet.
Okay.
So ARPA is the American Recovery Plan Act, which was passed on March 11th, signed into law on that date by President Biden. It is a significant amount of money. There are tranches available, and your audience should know this, there's money available for vaccines, there's money available for libraries, there's money available for restaurants, there's money available for all kinds of, of different needs and, and categories. The category I'm about to talk about is a small portion of that, and it's monies that's available for state, local, and tribal governments. Here in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the Commonwealth is entitled to $4.57 billion. Think about that. $4.57 billion additional dollars to the Commonwealth. There's also a tranche or a pot of money available to what they call metro communities. Metro community is a community with a population of 50,000 or more. Here in Plymouth County, that includes the city of Brockton and the town of Plymouth, the city of Brockton is receiving an additional $36 million and the town of Plymouth will be receiving an additional $9 million. In addition, there's a tranche or a pot of money available for non-metro cities. And that's anything that has a population of less than 50,000. Imagine if you had a population of 49,999 people. And I think we've seen some of those discrepancies. They're entitled to another smaller portion of money. There were some numbers being made about early. They're, they're close, but we don't think they're accurate yet because the final information isn't available. The pot of money that you're referring to is a tranche that's available to the counties. It's approximately $100 million that's available for us. The commissioners have tasked me to monitor that on an hourly basis and we do. The federal government was supposed to come out with rules and guidelines and regulations on that by April. That hasn't happened yet. April 1st, they told us two weeks. April 15th, they told us two weeks. April 29th, they told us two weeks. So sometime over the next two weeks, we expect that we'll be getting the guidance. The commissioners and I will then huddle and review and make a determination. Quite candidly, if the money comes directly to the communities, if we don't take that money to administer it, we have a difficult decision to make. We have many communities, based on the success of the CARES program, asking us to administer this because they know it comes with additional administrative burdens on your staff if we don't administer it. So we really have to take a look at it and see what the guidelines are going to be. The state is waiting for the guidelines as well. They don't know. And so we'll make that determination once we have that information. But it's, it is a lot of money. If you'd like, I, I feel like I've taken up a lot of time. I can elaborate on what the guidelines are and what you can spend it on and what you can't spend it on. But again, those will be fleshed out a little bit more once they release the guidelines.
Yeah, I, I think that could probably come at a later date. I was just curious to know whether, we knew whether that money was going to be coming to the county or how that money was going to be dispersed at this point. So, and again, any, anything from any other members of the board? Sarah, Ms. Hewens?
Thank you. I just wanted to emphasize how much we appreciate your cost-saving. I know that's a huge burden on you guys, but we appreciate it for the town.
Well, thank you. And, you know, it's nice as we travel, the commissioners get to hear a lot of positive reports. We were just in Hull not that long ago. As you can imagine, another smaller community, and they just are so grateful for us taking on that administrative burden. But that is the role of the county. Congress saw fit to put this pot of money and they understood our job was to get it out to you folks. So I'm really proud of the commissioners for stepping up to the plate. I know Jared wasn't here at the time. We have to commend Commissioner Pilata, who stepped up to the plate as well. But Jared has been a value-added member to the team and just has said, yeah, let's, let's do what we can, let's keep those costs down and, and get money back to our towns.
Thank you very much, much appreciated.
Thank you, thank. Yes, Mr. Hoffman?
I'd say a quick question, and I'm not sure if this is, can be answered by you. The last, this check that we got, first of all, thank you very much for all your hard work. We appreciate it.[1744.11] work. We appreciate it. Just curious that when the, we submit, well, have us submit proposals, like the last check we got back, was anything not approved?
I do know the answer to that. You would not be pleased with your Plymouth County Treasurer if they couldn't tell you the answer to that question.
I don't want to put you on the spot.
Nope, that's fine. If I'm not prepared, shame on me. Yes. So as is the case everywhere. So please understand this happens because we ask your towns to be very aggressive in submitting. So the original submission was for 194, 429.33, and $12,349.45 of that was deemed to be ineligible pursuant to the federal rules of the Cares Act. But that's par for the course. I can tell you, we've had some submissions where we knock out $10, but we have others where 80% of it gets knocked out because it's not eligible. I can tell you, one component, and this was not the case here in Carver, but one component of something that towns were submitting was hazard duty pay. And hazard duty pay is specifically not allowed under the Cares Act. And so we would have towns that would submit hundreds of thousands of dollars, and we could not reimburse that because it's prohibited by the Cares Act.
Please.
I think, and the only thing I'd like to add to that, Mr. Chairman, if I may, we talked to other selectmen, of course, across the county. There are some costs that are eligible in some communities and not in other communities based on whether or not they were included in a community's capital budget plan. For instance, I was at my hometown town meeting last night in Rockland, and we bought a couple of vehicles, and I was asked if they'd be reimbursable. I said, no, you had it on the warrant. You clearly were planning for it. You were clearly budgeting for it. Whereas another community might not have something that they've budgeted for that has been incurred as an expense. So that's another component to keep in mind because I think it's a treasure we can probably dovetail from me off of. There's been submissions that might be eligible in Carver that are not eligible in Plymouth. They might be eligible in Plymouth, they're not eligible in Wareham for a myriad of reasons. But that's another important component to keep in mind with this program, too.
Thank you. If I could, Mr. Lafont, could you just repeat the number that you said we had outstanding, we had outstanding submissions with Plymouth County?
Sure. And I do have a handout for the board, if you probably don't need to look at it at the moment. But we've submitted a total of $1,318,000 and 328 cents. No, 42 cents. And we have, of the available, 1.7 million. So there's a balance of $400,000. Of that amount, there's still, now granted, that 1.3 that was submitted, not everything has been approved, as Mr. O'Brien has pointed out. We still have about $818,000 of review pending.
And that's pending with the county?
Right. Submissions that have already been, that are already in place, that are being, going through the process with the county.
Good.
And those dates span from last July 2020 through the end of, really through the end of April, but primarily through the end of March.
Okay. Thank you.
But just to, if I might just, the submissions outstanding are all the more recent submissions. Those ones from July and September and October have already been reimbursed.
Thank you. I was just going to ask about.
Yes. Yeah. So most of the submissions, so you'll recall, the deadline was December 30th. And so towns slammed us with submissions on or about that date. So most of the submissions that were prior to that date were now finishing up and catching up. A number of your submissions are after that date, on or after that date. So they're under review. And you have a big one that was submitted mid-February. That's under review, and will get processed as quickly as we can.
Well, we appreciate all your efforts on my behalf. And we really do appreciate you taking the time out of your schedules. I know this is over and above, and I appreciate you coming down tonight and a meeting with the board. We really appreciate that.
Well, the more you folks know, the better off we all are.
Mr. Hoffman.
I'm not sure if this is, if it's allowed or whatever, but I noticed two of our public service, safety chiefs are here. If they had any questions, could we let them ask?
Absolutely.
I don't mean to put you guys on the spot, but you have the commissioners right here tonight, so.
Sure. By Chief Weston, first of all, thank you for all your hard work. And obviously, that's great relationship for years. Thank you for all being there and answering my questions. Just to ask for a little assistance, both public safety departments, how to fire EMS, we do a little packet of submission that we are waiting for. We will reimburse the packet of three. So could you put any assistance with that and just helping us get that? That's money that we definitely utilize. We'll be submitting sometime in December of that area. Just asking for some assistance on that. That's a big one for us, and certainly the public safety department. So, thank you.
Great. And thank you for recognizing. I can tell you, Chief Weston is not shy. And I go back, I think, to my state rep days, but certainly to my early treasurer days. And he knows we will certainly make it a point of doing that. We really appreciate our public safety officials. You know, we want to make sure that the review is done so that you get the most possible, and we'll make sure to do that.
Thank you. Anything else from the board? Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great day, everyone.
Thank you.
No, thanks a lot, Tom.
Go on, Dan. Right. The next item on our agenda is an appointment, a tenant appointment to the Carver Housing Authority of James Collins. So you're all aware, the state changed the way folks are appointed to the housing authority a couple of years ago, and they changed one of the elected positions to a position that had to be appointed from someone who actually lives in the housing authority. The housing authority has not had anyone since that became effective. The executive director of the housing authority did send something out to all the residents, making them aware that we were looking for some folks. And as I understand it, Mr. Collins was the only person that applied. So.
I make a motion. We approved Mr. Collins.
I'd like to second that motion.
Hearing a motion and a second. Any discussion? All are favor of appointing Mr. Collins to the housing authority?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. Let's see. We have an appointment to the Old Colony Elder Services, Connie Kelly. Do I hear a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Connie Kelly to Old Colony Elder Services.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Let's see. Next item on the agenda is a select board appointment to the Capitol Outlay Committee. Do we have any interest among select board members? Anyone particularly interested or any nominations?
I would be interested in the appointment if nominated.
Okay.
I nominate Jim.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a, we have a nomination and a second of Mr. Hoffman. Any other nominations? Hearing none. All in favor of appointing Mr. Hoffman to the, as the select board representative to the Capitol Outlay Committee?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Let's see. The next item on the agenda, moving right along, is an appointment of Jim Walsh as the planning board. I'm sorry, Jim Walsh appointed to the Serpent, and Bruce Mackey. Well, we'll take Jim Walsh's appointment first. Jim Walsh to the planning of board. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, if I may, I think both Jim Walsh and Bruce Mackey are planning board reps.
Uh.
And John Woods and Chris Vincent are transportation.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was looking at different things on my, on my agenda. Would the board like to take both appointments in the same motion, or do we want to make different, separate?
So moved.
Is there a second? Mr. Hoffman.
The appointment form that we have, I just note if it's, I don't know if it's filled out incorrectly, but the board at Selectman is checked off for Mr. Walsh, and Planning Board is checked off for Mr. Mackey. Is it?
I think, I think that's true. Yeah.
So do we have to do that separate?
No, but those two are appointed together, and the other two are moved together.
Okay. Thank you. I'll second the motion.
All right. So we have a motion and a second to appoint Jim Walsh and Bruce Mackey to Serpent. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, discussion. I'm sorry. Mr. Bellman.
With this, can we get updates from our representatives of Serpent of what they're doing and every quarter or whatnot that we have? Just updates for a lot of these positions that we appoint. We should get updates from the boards, committees, and commissions that we do appoint. And I think that will help for the town to know what's going on.
Mr. Lafont, is that something you can make these folks aware of?
He's not here.
He's out there.
He is?
He's schmoozing.
Okay. Well, I'll ask him about that, Bob, when he returns or after the meeting. Is that okay?
That's fine.
All right. All in favor of appointing Jim Walsh and Bruce Mackey to Serpent?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Let's see. Next. Approval of outdoor dining for all dine-in restaurants, including Section 12 liquor licensees until the governor's order is lifted.
I think we have to do John Woods.
Yeah, we.
Oh, John Woods.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did. Is there a motion to appoint John Woods?
I make a motion. We appoint John Woods and Christopher Vincent as.
Second.
Second. Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Hoffman, for bringing that to my attention. Let's see. Now, we'll move on to the approval of outdoor dining for all dine-in restaurants, including Section 12 liquor licensees until the governor's order is lifted. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Have a quick.
Yes, Mr. Lafont.
Sorry about that. Quick question.
Yep.
So has this changed since the last time we, I know, when we voted the last time, was that, did that expire? Is that why we're doing this?
Mr. Lafont?
There is one new restaurant added to the list, so we wanted to make sure that they were included. And also, we just wanted to check with public safety to see if they had any new parameters they wanted the restaurants to follow. So this just gives us the opportunity to release those guidelines again to all the restaurants.
Thank you.
Anything else? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next up is a discussion on the solar project on AD make piece land abutting Wareham.
That one was from me. There's been a lot of discussion and scuttlebutt about what's going on down there in Wareham. And I think we have to keep a close eye on that with our Conservation Commission and our earth removal to ensure that our lands in Carver are protected. And if there are possibility of purchasing property down there to protect it from overdevelopment, we have to keep an eye on that, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
May I comment on that as well?
Yep, be sure.
So this is a very complex project. They're taking place in both the town of Carver and Plymouth, and they have both been permitted in both towns by both boards. So there's no chance of our buying that land. That's number one. Number two is when we consider buying, purchasing land, I believe we need to consult our open space and recreation plan because the recommendations are in there made by members of the public. We had, same is with the master plan. The public's invited. They, we do a review. It's a public discussion and meeting. So that's, that's number one. We can't just arbitrarily buy a piece of land. But the main thing that I want to say is that I don't think it's our purview to tell the Conservation Commission or the Earth Removal Committee how to do their jobs. They've been at it a pretty long time, and our job is here, not telling them what to do. That's just my take on it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll rebut that. I mean, I think our job as a select board here is to keep an oversight of everything that's going on within our town.
We can keep oversight, but we can't tell them how to, how to do their jobs.
But we can ask them to keep an eye on it.
I think that's what they're doing.
Okay. All right. Moving on, a brief discussion on the formal evaluation process of the interim town administrator. The vote will only be to approve the formal evaluation forms. Evaluations will be filled out and submitted to the Assistant Town Administrator by Friday, May 14, 2021, so that they can be discussed, and the ITA's evaluation can be summarized at the June 1, 2021 Select Board Meeting. I think you all have a copy.
Yes. Mr. Chair?
Ms. Hewens.
Thank you. So at the previous, before this meeting, I asked Mrs. Weston to please put a blank copy of this in here. It does say 2018, but that's just because it's a blank one from the past. But Mr. Hoffman brought up a really good point in an email that I know people couldn't respond to. But he was, he had been looking at the school committee meeting, I believe. Correct me if I'm wrong, Jim. And he saw their, their process of evaluating their superintendent and felt that we needed to maybe emulate it a little more. But when I was comparing them, and Jim may see something in here that I don't, but I think even though ours is not as many pages, it covers a lot of the same categories and kind of has the same, kind of structurally the same way of quote-unquote grading the TA. So that, you know, one through five, one being worst, five being best, that kind of thing. But I just wanted to make sure Jim's point was in here because he may, as again, I think at the meeting or watched the meeting, so he may have seen something that I didn't.
Absolutely.
No, this is perfect. I hadn't seen this before I sent the email, so I apologize for that.
Oh, okay.
Once you brought that to my attention, I did check it. And this is, I was under the impression with the questionnaire-type evaluation, which I thought this is much, you know. Again, I wasn't familiar with the formal evaluation that we're having this time, so.
Right.
Thank you for.
Oh, sure. Definitely.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bellman.
Now, this, this evaluation process for us, I think it should go through the chair and not the Assistant Town Administrator. It's an evaluation of him for us. So I think that that's something that the chair should be, receive everything from us.
Well, I think, I think the Assistant Town Administrator was just sort of the person to return it to. That's all.
Yeah. And if I may, Mr. Chair, the reason I did that was to keep it out of, out of our hands so that someone, no one could say there was some political decision being made. I like to keep things clean that way.
Yeah. And I was going to suggest, I think it's better to have an impartial third party receive everything.
Yeah.
And just, obviously, we're going to summarize it and put it all together and present it to the board.
And we can all see copies of the numbers. I mean, there's nothing being hidden here.
I think the one question I had on page one with the goals and objectives, now obviously, you know, the goals and objectives on this blank form we used were different.
Right.
But I think we should find some way of incorporating some of the goals and objectives we set for Mr. Lafont back at our last evaluation into this form.
That's a good idea. Yep.
And I wonder what the board's thoughts would be on that.
Yep. I think that's a great idea because we did, those were quite lengthy, you know, informal evaluations that people made, so.
Right. Ms. Weston, is that something you could do? Could you incorporate some of those goals and objectives into this first page?
Yeah, and you're referring to this listing of several goals, projects, and concerns.
Yes, what we did on his sort of informal assessment the last time. Great. So if you could put that together and get it all out to the board, then if you could just all, you know, complete those forms, take some time to meet with Mr. Lafont and try and get those back to Ms. Weston by May 14. Is that okay with everyone?
Sounds good.
Okay.
So I just have one quick question. So, Mrs. Weston, not to put any pressure on you, but when do you think you'd have that, that first page? Should we just start on the other pages, and then you'll get us the first page?
Okay, it's on tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Just to be clear on the process. So we're sending these to Elaine. Elaine is going to send them to Rick, and then we meet with him, or?
No. What's going to happen is, Ms. Weston will send out the form with the goals and objectives as soon as she can. We are each going to make an appointment. We're going to fill out the form, meet with Mr. Lafont, discuss it with Mr. Lafont.
Yeah.
And then after that, submit the, return the forms to Ms. Weston.
Okay. So we don't return them to her until after we've met with Rick?
Yeah. And I think the reason, and if anyone wants to comment or change, I think the reason we did that last time is because sometimes you'll, you'll look at something and say, well, you know, I'm not really happy with this. But after you discuss it, you may find out, well, there was a reason that I wasn't aware of that was done this way. And that's why I think it's important to meet with, with Mr. Lafont and discuss it before you submit it, just in case there's something we weren't aware of.
Yeah, I agree. I think that was the goal last time, was to, okay, we might change our opinion, so.
Absolutely. So does that, that work for the board?
Yes.
All right. So we will move forward with that. And moving on, a discussion and possible vote to add an additional select board member and/or the operations and maintenance director to the refuse disposal district.
That would be me. All right. So since Marion has left, it leaves the board for the district to six members, three from Wareham and three from Carver. With one member left, and John Carter is going to be leaving, it'll reduce us With one member left and John Carter is going to be leaving, it'll reduce us down to four people and three from Wareham and one from Carver. And it's been posted out there that we need somebody else to fill in for two new people just to match with what Wareham... Wareham actually only has two people working right now for them.
Okay.
So if we don't have a fourth member, we can't have meetings. As a six-member board, we need a minimum of four to actually have a meeting. So unfortunately, we have to make a decision on how we're going to manage the district. We have probably close to about $900,000, but we just sold our equipment, which will bring us up to over $1 million in the bank. But the district itself, we still have bills to pay over the next coming years. So that money is kind of set aside, so the town more than likely won't see any money back for a long, long time because we have to protect the interests of the district.
So when is Mr. Carter's term expire?
To be honest, I don't know.
Okay.
I think next month.
Okay, but he's still on the board right now.
Still on the board right now. He's our treasurer. And some of the things that we have been doing with the district is that we've consolidated all of our equipment. We just sold it all for about $90,000, if I got the numbers right, for those sales, and then we get back about 70-something because there's a commission through the auction process. We've also, as I am the chair, trying to create policies and procedures for the district. And hopefully, we'll be crafting a new agreement on how to, if there is money coming back, how we separate it between Carver and Wareham in the percentage amount.
So right now, does Carver have three representatives, or they only have yourself and Mr. Carter?
We have two representatives and Wareham has two. They have a select person and the head of their DPW. He's their second one there. Their third person resigned after his term, okay? So right now, we need to do our job. We need to meet. And if no one's jumping up for this, and it's one of those things that if we were running a transfer station, I think we would have gotten people to, "Yeah, I want to keep it." But because we're not running a transfer station, we have nothing to do with the transfer station. The district is just overseeing the land, which is part of our money, that if we ever stop doing a transfer station, we can thus sell that property and that will be added into whatever we have in the bank. But we have to monitor that money. And that money cannot be squandered away. We have to be frugal and make sure it lasts us for the next 20, 30 years to pay off our insurances until the landfill is capped, which is almost capped. They are... they're working on that now, which is good.
Okay.
My suggestion is that another board member here become a second member to cover ourselves. So at least when John does leave, we do have two people running. And then possibly our DPW chair or somebody else from Operations and Maintenance.
Mr. Lefond and Ms. Weston, do either of you know when John Carter's term expires?
It's June 30th.
June 30th, okay. What are the thoughts of the board?
Bob, have you talked to the Operations and Maintenance Director or the Assistant Director to see if they'd be interested?
I have not. I just put it out there to say, "Hey, I mean, Wareham's... that's how they're handling it right now." But we have... like I said, we need to have that full complement unless we... until we get a new agreement between Carver and Wareham, and this is going to be a discussion that we're going to have to have, is I know the discussion before was to go to a skeleton district where there would be two members, one from Carver and one from Wareham overseeing it, and then the town administrators would oversee it. And it was back then, it would be Marion, so it would have been three. But that really, I don't think... I don't like that makeup of it. I think we do need to have at least two members from each town at all times, just my opinion, to oversee and make sure that money is being spent the right way. And we've conducted our audits already, and we've passed so far of how our money is and what we spend it on, so...
Any other thoughts from the board? Mr. Lefond. I'm sorry, Ms. Lefond.
No, just to Bob's point, I would agree from my dealings with Bob and the district before the vote at town meeting, there's still... there's a lot of details to be worked out still, and there's a lot of money to be dealt with. I'm just offering that certainly I will check with our O&M Dave as well as... I'm sorry, what's our... John Woods, I'm sorry. Sorry, John, if you're listening. And see if either one of them would like to serve. Obviously, we don't want to be a position of appointing people who don't necessarily want to serve. And certainly, I'd be happy to do that myself in some capacity, whether it's interim or whatever, if you think that's helpful.
Okay. Ms. Bogarts?
I was going to say, I think Bob's points are good. If one of them would like to serve or another one of us would like to serve, I think it's a great idea.
Okay.
We meet usually the last Wednesday of the month. It's 5:00 or it'll be a morning meeting. It goes back and forth. But it's usually an hour and a half, two hours that we discuss it. We have an executive director that is... we just signed an agreement with him. I shouldn't say signed it, but we've agreed upon it. It will be signed this week, hopefully, once the lawyer gets finished with it. But that's reduced the cost for the district because there's going to be less that has to be done with him, and he understands that. So the contract basically cut everything in half to save money for the district, but also to turn around and gave him some flexibility in his job role that he does with the district. But he has also said that if the town of Carver has any issues dealing with waste because he has a... Jeff Osuch has a great knowledge of the waste issues, that we could use him as a guide. It's part of his contract. If we have any questions or issues or whatnot within the town, that he could be an assistance to us there, too.
All right. Okay with the board, if we ask Mr. Lefond to reach out to Mr. Woods, gauge his interest, and we can finalize this at the next meeting?
Yep.
Sure?
Thank you, everybody.
All right. We'll do that. Next up, discussion on a possible community yard sale.
All right. This was me. I don't really see them much at all out here. Weather's warmer, yard sales are coming. In Central Mass, where I grew up, my family still lives, townwide yard sales are a big thing, like every town has them every year. And I think they're a great idea. So the one I'm most familiar with is the one in Rutland, where my parents live, and they just had it. So I'd love to explain to you how theirs works and then kind of how I see it maybe being successful here if we were to have one. So the way it works there is there's a registration form. You have to fill it out, you send it in, and with them, you can either choose a spot on the town common to set up on yard sale day, or you can have a yard sale at your own house. So you send the form in, you register, and you tell them, "I'd like to be at the town common or at my house." Then a few days before the day of the sale, you get a yard sign to put in your yard that says official... actually, it's this, "Official participant Rutland Townwide Yard Sale." So you get it a couple of days before, you can put it out front, tells people driving by, "Hey, there's going to be a yard sale here on Saturday or Sunday." And then on the yard sale day, a map or list of the yard sales that are happening is made available on the town common or at the town lines. So if you're... you can just go pick it up and you can see, "Where do I want to drive around today?" And then you can set up at the town common at 6:00 a.m., sales are from 8:00 to 2:00. They marked 10-by-10 spaces for people to choose from with six feet between them and social distancing, mask, hand sanitizer, rain or shine. So that's kind of how theirs went this year. I would like to propose a simpler version, like the inaugural townwide yard sale, because we all see the yard sale signs go up all the time in the ads. So let's just be like, "Hey, guys, let's just all have one this weekend, and we can get all the yard sailors out." So my simpler version would be that we pick a date for it, possibly a rain date if we want to consider that. We could advertise in the Carver Reporter, on the town website, on social media, for people who want to be included in the official list, submit their name, or not their name, their address to us, and then maybe like a one-line description of what they'd be selling. So you know, "Okay, I'm going to have a baby. I'll go. There's baby stuff there." So then the optional part would be, would we want to make the small investment to then give people the signs to put in their yards a few days before or not? We could do a fundable deposit. We could just say no signs, because again, I'm planning a little small-scale inaugural. So they submit to us, address, one-line description of what they'd like to sell. We compile the list. We set a deadline, registration. If you're interested, you've got to reach out to us by this day. We compile the addresses and the descriptions of the yard sales, and we can publish it in the newspaper, put it on the website, the social... all the standard sources that we would publish things. Then maybe we could promote the yard sale using the fire department light-up sign, how they, you know, "Town elections this Saturday, townwide yard sale this Saturday." And then we could have paper copies of the official list of participants to give out, too, if people want to come to town hall and get one. And then just have the yard sale. So I mean, that was a long talk for a very simple idea, but it's... out there, it brings a lot of community spirit. You go there on yard sale day, and it's fun, whether there's, you know, the town common option, which I'm not proposing this year, or not. It's just a fun, small-town activity, and I'd love to see it happen here. Plus, a lot of people have yard sales. So I would love to see us do a skeleton version as the inaugural and see how much interest we even get.
Thoughts from the board? Mr. Belvin?
I agree. I mean, I already had mine. That is an awesome idea to put out for our town. The costs associated with this, we'd have to look at of... I know it would be not much money, but when you start laminating stuff, it comes in some costs and signage and whatnot. And then anything, time we print anything up, and then the employee time to get this all tied together and whatnot. But no, it's... I mean, as long as it's planned right, I've actually asked the sportsman club about doing a flea market there and whatnot, so... And one of the issues that we look at in the future is that getting... if people don't clean up after themselves, and this is what we have to look at, the town common-wise, if they don't clean up themselves, then how much is it going to cost us to get rid of that stuff they don't get rid of? So I know...
Which is why this year I'm not proposing the town common version.
Oh, I totally understand. Like I said, that's one of the big fears, is that if people just up and see you later, "I'm gone, leaving everything there," never see them again, and then we're stuck trying to get rid of it. That's our fear. But no matter what, this is a great idea, and anything to bring community spirit.
Anyone else? Mr. Hoffman?
I think it's a great idea, Jen. Like Bob just said, anything to bring community spirit and just get the community together, I think it's great. And you have such a diverse group of families ages-wise that, you know, I know on summer mornings, people is going up and down Route 58 looking for the yard sale signs. So it's a... I know we do sometimes, too, and it's a great thing to... good tradition to start. Start off small like that, and then maybe move it to a general area in the future. That's perfect.
I am so thankful, because yeah, like Bob said, the cost associated. We don't do the town common. Maybe we don't do the signs this year because it's just new, but again, just the skeleton version, send us your address, what you want to sell, we'll make a master list, and we'll make it available.
Just a simple thing, you know, Saturday, June, whatever, is Carver Yard Sale Day.
Right.
Then that's what they do out there. I mean, if it's... if the town is fancy enough to have, you know, a sign like the fire department and the school does, they put it on there. But some of the small towns, just in front of their town hall, they're using those little clapboards that we have, or people are making their own signs, you know, yard sale. So it doesn't have to be expensive, but it's fun. So maybe we could plan a date sometime this summer.
Ms. Yhones?
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Yes. Well, I have to agree. I think it's a really nice idea. I know Plimpton actually does this, too.
Do they?
Yeah, and I think they do it on their commons. So we might want to talk to them as to how they make that work, because I also agree we don't want to have to, you know, our DPW's stressed enough, they don't need to be cleaning up the commons after people. But I mean, as you said, just a simple list, here's where you go, here's where to get it, or even just announcing that we're doing it, and then people... each household can be responsible for their own signage, maybe.
And I agree. I think it's a great idea. I guess the only thought I would have before we set a date is perhaps Mr. Lefond could reach out to the Public Safety Department to just make sure there isn't a particular date that they might see as a conflict for one reason or another or another, and just avoid that if we need to. But I think it's a great idea.
Great.
So let's... we'll put this on a future agenda, and we'll come up with a date.
Awesome.
Thank you. Let's see. Town Administrator update, Mr. Lefond.
Yes, Mr. Chair. We obviously covered one issue already, and I do have a handout that I... for the board, just for your knowledge regarding where we stand with the CARES Act, but you obviously got the... you got the update right from the horse's mouth this evening. The other couple of major issues we have right now, the water line, Plummer Street Water Line, the low bidder has been awarded the bid pursuant to the law. We are in the process of contracting with the low bidder right now. So the bid was awarded in a timely manner pursuant to the administrative consent order. The contract should be executed fairly soon. That's obviously, to some extent, in the hands of Town Council. And then the shovel has to be in the ground, so to speak, by the end of May. So we are on path to do that. The other piece, 44 Lakeview, the closing is on this Friday, May 7th. Conservation Commission is meeting tomorrow night and will formally approve the disbursement of funds to pay for the property. As of right now, there's been no hiccups at all with dealing with the... between Town Council and the attorney for Mr. Burns for the Eldridge Party.
Mr. Lefond?
Yes.
That's not on the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So I'm sorry, but I have to stop you on that.
Well, if I could mention just one thing, the... yes, the Veterans Agent is... would like to have a Memorial Day parade this year for the first time in a couple of years. So unless there's any objections, that's my intent to tell him to start moving forward.
All in favor?
And I will give you a written update on some of the things I did not quite get in tonight. That be fair?
Thank you.
Okay.
Let's see.
I've got a quick question.
Mr. Hoffman?
Mr. Lefond, as far as the Plummer's Water Street Line?
Yes.
So I know the last time we talked, it was about putting the water line and then the curb stops. Is that still part of the whole plan, that it's stopping at the curb stop, correct?
That is correct. Yes.
I know there was some discussion back and forth about...
No, the next piece will be the best approach to actually hooking up these homes, whether we want to go out and do that as a separate... as another bid entirely to encompass all of the hookups. That's another question that we have with our consulting engineers and find out the best approach to that. Obviously, that's still some time before we have to, you know, reach some sort of conclusion on that. By the time, you know, this project isn't going to be completed until the fall. So in the meantime, as I mentioned, with the town's consulting engineers and the licensed site professional, we can determine what the best approach is that's most convenient for the homeowners and most cost-effective.
Has there been discussion with which homeowners wanted to hook up? I know the last time we had talked, that wasn't formally approached.
The answer to this date is no. The... what a health agent is contacting each member of the... each of the 19 homes that are currently being tested. We have spoken to the Department of... I'm sorry, the DEP with regard to having a community meeting to see what assistance they'll lend for a community meeting. I know there is going to be some... I don't want to use the word pressure, but I... DEP is going to be heavily encouraging all of those who are on the line, all 19, to hook up at the town's cost. And not in five years, not in 10 years. There's a remedy available for a problem that some of them have. Some of them may not recognize it for some period of time if they don't hook up. So DEP is going to be pushing hard to get these homeowners convinced that they need to hook up now.
So there will be...
So there is outreach from the health agent, and there will be a community meeting with support from DEP.
Thank you.
I don't have a date yet. Mr. Fogg was doing his due diligence first with the homeowners.
Ms. Ewens?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. I just wanted to also point out that I met with Mr. LaFawn and Dave Sedentoff, the operations management, operations and maintenance director. I'm in the process of trying to write a grant to help offset the cost of that whole project. We'll see if we get it, but I figure the least we can do is try.
Wonderful, thank you.
Yep.
Is there anything else? Jim? Mr. Belvin?
Yeah, as, as soon as we have those dates of when we're going to have a community meeting, all right, and can you let us know when the residents have all been notified by mail about if they're going to hook up or not? I think that's very important, and-
Right. I, I think that the community meeting maybe will be helpful in people making a decision as to what their intent would be. So I, I don't know that initial outreach from, from the health agent will, will be definitive in terms of who's going to hook up. I think giving them some of the background and trying to get them to a meeting to listen to the town, listen to DEP, I think that would be the, the primary goal. Certainly to the extent that, that there are people who are very clear that they want to hook up, I think that would be helpful for us to know. But I think the community meeting will be helpful in hopefully convincing people that this is a good reason and why this is a good reason.
Okay. And Sarah, when you get a chance, can you send us a copy of your grant that you're writing?
It's online, Bob. It's an online electronic grant.
Just, just wanted to know what it was, because I didn't hear anything about it until the-
Yeah, we've been, we've been meeting on it, and I believe I did mention it. As soon as I have something, I'd be happy to supply it.
Okay. Anything else? I guess not, okay. Minutes licensed topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair, forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting. Request for nine additional automatic amusement devices, NGR Cape Cod, LLC, DBA, Yogi Bears, Jellystone Park Camp Resort, Cranberry Acres. Ms. LaFawn, what is, I don't have anything in my packet on that.
Yeah, it's in there.
Is it?
NGR.
They're adding nine additional automatic amusement devices, which include just video games, a claw machine, stuff like that.
I'll make a motion, we approve.
Second? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. Let's see.
Bob, where's your impersonation? I want to hear your, your yogi.
Yeah. Request to use Shirtlift Park Captain Powell Preschool for May 28th, 2021, 10:30 a.m.
Make a motion, we approve?
Second? Motion and second, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it. Let's see, our next meeting will be May 18th, 2021, minutes of April 6th, 2021.
Can I ask that those be tabled? I had emailed Elaine a correction earlier tonight, but there's a part of the meeting I want to go back and watch, just to check. So could we table April 6th?
Sure.
Okay.
Motion to table April 6th?
Motion to table April 6th, 21 meeting.
Second? All in favor?
One question, discussion. I had issues, too. I made a number of comments on those. There was, I, I, too, caught a couple of things in there, and we just have to be a little more clearer of what people say, how they say it, and just to make sure, I mean, one of them was the motion by Hoffman to exercise the town's first right of refusal. And it is not, we're not going to exercise our right.
We're talking about just April 6th?
That was April 6th, yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion.
Maybe we could save our comments and save those, send those edits to Mrs. Weston instead of doing it here? There has been a motion to table.
Yep. Okay, motion to table in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. The minutes of April 20th, 2021.
Make a motion, we approve?
I'll second that.
Motion and second, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Select Board Community Announcements. Ms. Bogarts?
Oh, well, it's not an announcement, it's a note. Did we skip? I don't have anything to announce today.
Yeah, the notes are next. Okay. Ms. Ewens?
Thank you, yes. I'd like to just thank everyone who voted in town in our local election. It really matters who you vote for. This is your town, and those are your officials you're voting for. So thank you all.
Thank you. Mr. Belvin?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Meg Lemay for her many years of work and service here in the town of Carver, and I wish her good luck on her future endeavors that she has, and she will be missed in this town. Next thing is farmer's market's coming, all right? And the last thing is, just ask for people to be safe with the lifting of the mask by the governor and open it up. Even though you wear a mask, it protects you and it protects other people. Even if you have a vaccine, you may feel that you're Superman, that you don't have to wear a mask all the time, but even if you don't wear a mask and you have the vaccine, you can still catch COVID, may not get it as worse as what it is, but you can also still spread it. So I just want you to be careful, be safe out there for your fellow residents out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hoffman?
I, I would also like to thank everybody that came out for the election. As Sarah said, that's a very important duty we all have, and thanks everybody that came out on a Saturday. But I also want to thank everyone that ran. It takes a lot to go out there and put yourself out there, especially in social media and everything else going on. So I just want to thank everybody that did run. And the last thing is, the Seventh Annual Kane Strong Golf Outing is coming up on May 15th. I know some people have asked me about raffle prizes. We're still accepting raffle prizes up until the 14th, the day before. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And I would just add my thanks to everyone that came out to vote. It's a tremendous obligation that we have in this country to vote, and I appreciate everyone that came out. I also appreciate all the poll workers, the police detail officers, everyone that's involved in making the election successful, town clerk, all her employees. I think it was a well-run election, and I appreciate everyone coming out. So thank you. Select Board Notes. Ms. Bogarts?
All right. So the first one, I had a resident reach out to me asking if there was a master list of walking paths or trails that could be distributed to seniors. And I replied and said, well, not that I'm aware of, but I think it's a great idea, not just for seniors, but for everyone. So I, I reached out to, to Sarah and Rick and gave them the inquiry, and with, with Sarah's help, she involved Brooke, the conservation agent, in trying to compile a list of trails in town, which is a great start. But I would also like an option of more paved walking options. So I just think it would be great if we, you know, collectively could just kind of brainstorm safe, appropriate places that seniors or anyone could just go in town to walk, whether, you know, Savory Avenue, just, let's just brainstorm things so we can have a master list on the town website and can be given to, to seniors through the COA, too. So that came from a resident, and so I would just, I thought it was a great idea. And then the second one is, I would love us to get a status update on the reopening of the Council on Aging, especially since the, the Massachusetts reopening guidelines from Governor Baker have changed. So I would love to know how things are changing there. So maybe we could get an update at a future meeting as to what's going on there.
I'll be happy to forward you an update before our next meeting. Right now, the COA Director and Chair, and to a lesser extent, me at this time, are dealing with the Board of Health and determining, well, the health agent determining what an appropriate soft opening would be, and then transitioning to congregate meals again. So there is a plan, well, there's a plan being formulated to do that. The goal is to have that hopefully in place, at least in terms of a so-called soft opening by the end of the month, and then the meals program again sometime in June. But I'll get you more detail on that.
Awesome.
And it's nothing solidified, but obviously, it's, the, the brainstorming is, is going on right now.
Awesome.
Great, thank you. And let's see, with that, I would entertain a motion to go into an executive session in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30a, subsection 213, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining negotiations with unions, operation, and maintenance that may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town if held in open session, and not to reconvene in open session.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Ms. Bogarts?
Uh, yes, Jim Bogart, aye.
Ms. Ewens?
Sarah Ewen says aye.
Mr.-
Robert Belvin says aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Jim Hoffman says aye.
And Mark Townsend says aye. Thank you.